Invocation is the honorable Lewis Jones.
All right.
Salt bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we know that you are always near us and beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the courage to act. And when we leave here this evening, may we take your love and your fellowship with each and every one of us. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And, uh, Madam Clark, do we have the roll call?
All present, excluding Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I am gonna call for a, um, motion for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in a second. Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, and a motion for the approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of January 4, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All right, vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, uh, tonight, we are pleased to have a, um, you know, honoring of a great city at the 60th anniversary awards. Um, and this is such a great thing, and, uh, you know, we have a lot of people that we are very grateful in the city that do some extraordinary things. So Tiff, if you could come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, I'm pleased to represent the Communications Office today in what I'm about to show you. Uh, it's the result of a lot of hard work, um, and an idea, uh, from Councilwoman Barbara Henley. And so let me start, um, by sharing that, as we know, Virginia Beach today is a thriving and diverse community that includes ample opportunity, comfortable living, rewarding tourism outlets, and exciting entertainment. And it's the people from the early days until now that made and continue to make the city that is the success that it is. As we prepare for the 60th anniversary of Virginia Beach in January 2023, we want to use this year to highlight the people, the places, and the things that make Virginia Beach remarkable. To some, this will be a look back; to others, this will be new knowledge. Either way, let's begin our monthly quick look at history that should never be forgotten.
Thank you.
To look at today's landscape in the city of Virginia Beach, its mix of quaint and modern neighborhoods, thriving outlets for transportation, varied commerce and entertainment enjoyed by residents and tourists alike, it's hard to fathom that the birth of this city took place not quite 60 years ago. On January 1st, 1963, Princess Anne County and the Virginia Beach Resort area merged, and the city of Virginia Beach was born.
Mr. Mapp was the Commissioner of the Revenue, beginning in 1951 in Princess Anne County. He, in fact, was the Chairman of the Merger Committee. Virginia Beach was a resort town. It was compact, had its own character. But the county was sprawling all the way from the North Carolina line and all along the ocean into, um, Blackwater and Bayside and all the other areas that they were diverse. Lot of farmland, but there was a lot of potential for growth. They worked to put the city together, and it's now the largest city in the state. And for a time, it was the fastest-growing city in the United States for about a 10-year period in the late 60s and early 70s.
The city government served the needs of the city's then-population of about 147,000 with only 13 departments. And in the next five years, residents of the newly-formed city would see the opening of Red Wing Park. Virginia Beach General Hospital relocated from the oceanfront to First Colonial Road. Travel would upgrade with the opening of the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, as well as the opening of the Norfolk-Virginia Beach Expressway as Interstate 44, while many of you from back in the day just called it "The Toll Road." Motorists often used the roadway to get to the new Pembroke Mall. And how's this for nostalgia? Do you remember the term "Vepco"? It was Vepco, or the Virginia Electric and Power Company, that built the Lake Gaston Dam, a 1963 North Carolina project that would have significant influence on the Virginia Beach water supply in years to come. Putting our region, once known as "Tide Water," on the map, is the newly-formed city of Virginia Beach. If you have pictures or videos you'd like to share that captured the early days of Virginia Beach or proud reflections of what makes this city your home, we would love to hear from you. Visit vbgub.com/nostalgicvb for step-by-step directions on how to get those pictures and videos to us. We thank you in advance for sharing.
So that was a quick look at the years 1963 to 1968. Each month, uh, here at our council meeting, we'll take a look at highlights from the next five-year period. Uh, Mayor, we have some honored guests who are here today, uh, and I'd like to, I know you have some special presentations.
Oh, this is gonna be great.
Thank you.
Um, the Nostalgic VB Campaign presents us with the beautiful opportunity to look back at our history. And, uh, first off, we're gonna honor Ander, yeah, Amber Hatchet. Please join me, and, yeah, please come on up.
Thank you.
Hey, how are ya?
Doing great. Ambler Hatchet.
Very nice to meet you, sir.
Nice meeting you.
Yeah, please stand right over there, and I'm gonna read a proclamation. And it says, "Whereas Russell Hatchet, who served as the first city manager of Virginia Beach from 1955 to 1967, has served the community through his hard work, unwavering support, and tireless efforts to elevate the profile of the city of Virginia Beach and to enhance the quality of life for citizens. Russell Hatchet first gave of his time and knowledge to help cultivate Virginia Beach into an outstanding location for many to call home and an enduring source of pride in the high standing among other large cities in our great nation. Russell Hatchet has inspired others with unyielding dedication to the projects and efforts and throughout Virginia Beach to help establish this city as a premier coastal community. Whereas the city of Virginia Beach has greatly benefited from the expertise and enthusiastic support provided by Russell, he is among the city's residents and community contributors who have made Virginia Beach a unique and well-known place to live, work, and play. Whereas the community has been pleased with the generosity and passionate advocacy of Russell as he fostered relationships with the city of Virginia Beach and within the Hampton Roads area. And whereas by exemplifying the model of citizenship and service in the city of Virginia Beach, Russell has empowered other citizens to contribute their skills and talents, you know, to the community. And whereas Nostalgic VB is a celebration of Virginia Beach pioneers and residents leading up to the 60th anniversary of our great city in January 2023, therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor, do hereby proclaim Russell Hatchet recipient of the Virginia Beach Diamond Award."
Thank you. I'd like to make a few comments if I could.
That would be great.
Uh, first of all, I wanted to say we are very excited to be here tonight and proud to accept this recognition on behalf of our grandfather, William Russell Hatchet, uh, who is lovingly called Daddy Russ. Uh, he's, his three children are now deceased: Bill Hatchet, Martha Owen, who was a Miss Virginia Beach, uh, one award winner, and, uh, and also my father, Ambler Hatchet. His wife, who is as strong and loving as they come, nanny as we called her, Lucy Hatchet, is also deceased. I'm one of the grandsons, and with me are our other grandchildren. I'd like to recognize William Hatchet and his wife, Toni, and then Kent Hatchet, and then also, uh, Lucy Gardner and Wes Gardner, and also my sister, uh, Ann Russell Snyder. Uh, the, some of the grandchildren still here, calling Virginia Beach our home. I'd also like to, uh, our other grandkids sharing their thanks and not able to be here include Janet Hatchet, Mark Hatchet, Martha Glasser, and Brianne Swain. Just a little bit, um, our granddad was a hard-working visionary leader who was a champion for all, as evidenced by his pallbearers from the sanitation department dressed in white. Also, he saw to it that the fire trucks were painted white. Even as youngsters, we recognized his passion for the city, from the merging of Princess Anne County and Virginia Beach to the numerous other measures throughout his tenure as city manager. He also ran for governor and was head of civil defense. He went to Duke University at the age of 16 and played on the basketball team. He understood the importance of the beach and the Atlantic Ocean as the city's greatest resource and asset to the community. He made sure the beach had sand and did not erode. Um, he was a leader in getting Mount Trashmore built, and he brought the Norwegian lady over from Maas, Norway, and saw to it that a facing statue was established in Norway, too. Russell Hatchet showed his leadership and compassion for others when the 1963 Ash Wednesday Hurricane storm devastated the beach and sent homes into the ocean. He called General Booth himself at Dam Neck and had him bring in duck boats to rescue citizens. He later named General Booth Boulevard in his honor. He led the development of Red Wing Lake Golf Course and one in multiple golf courses built at the time. He saw the potential of the city as a golf destination like Myrtle Beach. The course was dedicated to him when he retired, and he paid for me to have lessons at the course and brought me my first set of golf clubs. I still play with the putter that he bought for me at that time. Um, and I have a great passion for the game, thanks to him. A retirement ceremony was held at the Dome for him, and he had all of his grandkids stand on chairs for recognition, showing how he was a family man first and foremost. I still remember the song that sang that night. It's gonna be some bad singing, but, "Russell, Russell Hatchet, leader of Virginia Beach." Others contributed to building the great city, but none more than Daddy Russ. Thank you again for the opportunity to accept this recognition on his behalf, and long live the Virginia Beach community.
Thank you. And on behalf of the grateful community, we thank you. We thank your family. Once again, a true pioneer that made us great.
And this is Daddy Russ's briefcase, which I still use today.
And we have a shameless photo op, okay? There we go. Oh, you got it, Mayor. Call me Bobby D. Okay, next. We're going to ask Ms. Alyssa Pace Wilson to, Alice Pace Wilson to come forward. Welcome and good evening. Good to see you. Okay. I am honored to read this proclamation. "Whereas Detective Charles C. Pace, who was a Virginia Beach policeman of the year in 1967 and the first African-American to receive this high honor, has served the community through the hard work and dedication to the law enforcement profession and his tireless efforts to ensure safety for the residents of Virginia Beach and to enhance the quality of life. Whereas Detective Pace has given of his time and knowledge to help cultivate Virginia Beach into an outstanding location for many to call home, an enduring source of pride in its high standing among the large cities across this great nation. And whereas Detective Pace has inspired others with his outstanding commitment to protect and to serve the residents and the visitors throughout Virginia Beach to help establish the city as a premier coastal community. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach has greatly benefited from the expertise and enthusiastic support provided by Detective Pace, he is counted among the city's residents and community contributors who have made Virginia Beach a unique and well-known place to live, work, and play. And whereas the community has been blessed with the unyielding sacrifice of Detective Pace as he, you know, strengthened relationships with the cities, citizens of Virginia Beach and within the Hampton Roads area. And whereas by exemplifying the model of citizenship and the service of the city of Virginia Beach, Detective Pace has supported other citizens to contribute their skills and talents to the community. Whereas Nostalgic VB is a celebration of Virginia Beach pioneers and residents leading up to the 60th anniversary of a great day in January 2023. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, do hereby proclaim Detective Charles C. Rice recipient of the Virginia Beach Diamond Award."
Pace.
Pace. Oh, my apologies. You got it.
And Mayor, and he was a sergeant.
He was a sergeant.
Yes, but he was a detective, but he retired as a sergeant.
That is outstanding. Thank you very much. On behalf of a grateful city, thank you, Sergeant Pace. Would you like to say a few words?
You said a lot. I didn't have a lot. I'm one of eight children, four deceased. I also wanted to recognize my mom, which was his backbone. She recently deceased, and, uh, yeah.
Please take a few minutes.
Yeah, no, so I'm just, you know, she was his backbone, and, uh, I wish she could have been here to, to see this. Uh, you did say everything that I was gonna say, and my dad is just one of the reasons why Virginia Beach is successful, so that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
You are very kind.
Okay, uh, before we get to the public hearings, I think we have some Boy Scouts in the audience? Come on forward. Putting you on the spot. I used to be a Boy Scout back in 1962. Hey, come on forward. And one by one, come up and just say your name and scout troop. Welcome to be putting on the spot. Yep.
Um, hello, my name is Jackson. I'm in Troop 179.
Great. Yeah, come on up here. I got a pin for you. And keep on coming, and just mention your name.
Hi, my name's Gavin. I'm also from Troop 179.
Oh, great welcome. The future of our country.
I'm Cooper, and I'm from Troop 179.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Nick, and I'm also from Troop 179.
Great.
My name is Alex, and I'm also from Troop 179 as well.
Outstanding.
Um, hello, my name's Samuel Talon, and I'm from Troop 179.
Great.
My name's Luther, and I'm from Troop 179, too.
Hey.
My name is AJ, and I'm from Troop 179.
You're welcome.
My name's Harmon Talon, and I'm also from Troop 179.
My name is Joshua Craigor. I'm Troop 179's Senior Patrol Leader.
Way to go.
My name is Chris. I'm from Troop 179.
My name is Joseph, and I'm from Troop 179.
Great.
And, Mr. Mayor, they were camping north of Richmond this weekend.
Oh, Lord, the cold-weather scouts, huh?
I had it tough.
Oh, my goodness. I tell you, isn't it great to be able to have the scouts back in the audience?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, COVID was, uh, not kind to, uh, getting the, uh, Community Merit badge, I guess, but... Okay, we're gonna move on now to the public hearing. And, uh, the first is amendments to the Virginia Beach Public Schools Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program to appropriate, uh, $54,938,822 in the fiscal year 2021 School Operating, uh, Reversion Funding and Established Capital Projects, Number 1-030 Replacement Payroll System and Number 1-031 School Bus and Fleet replacement. Do we have speakers?
Yes, Your Honor. The first speaker is Terry Green, and after Terry Green is Pat Thebert. Are you Mr. Green?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you.
Hey, welcome. Good.
Hello, Mayor Dyer, City Council members. My name is Terry Green. I have worked for the City Public Utilities Department in water for 32 years. As Dr. Martin Luther King stated, "A budget is more document. It shows what your priorities are." While we appreciate you making these amendments to the school operating budget, we also want to encourage you to recognize that other departments, such as Public Works, Utilities, Human Services, Parking Rec, Landscape, et cetera, we stand before you today to ask you seriously consider a more systematic process to allow city employees to have input to the city budget via collective bargaining. We too, essential workers, but, uh, we are not receiving essential pay. As our nation celebrated Dr. King's holiday yesterday, we have remembered that he took his last stand supporting city workers in Memphis, Tennessee, demanding the right to collective bargaining. Thirteen hundred strong sanitation workers striked in 1968 to spark by the death of two black city workers, Echo Cole and Robert Walker, who had been crushed on the job by a Virginia, a malfunction truck. We want to honor his real legacy as we request that the Virginia Beach City Council pass a resolution to support collective bargaining. City workers across Virginia have historically opportunities to overcome a racist legacy of the Jim Crow era. Five local governments across Virginia has passed similar resolutions to this date. Working in the water department is becoming completely impossible. Due to the many staff leaving, the city used to have eight crews, we are down to three, and we are a big city. We are working overtime to cover all the water main breaks, keep the water running for the residents. As we approach leak season, I am seriously concerned about the ability for us to get our residents to clean drinking water that they deserve. Currently, when the city water crew cannot respond to a water main break, we all have hired, you all have hired contract-
Thank you very much.
-private companies paying them $5,000 per water main break.
Thank you very much, sir.
This is a job that our crews should be able to cover. If that contractor is called out after a normal business day hour-
Sir, thank you very much.
-they are paid $15,000.
Appreciate your comment.
This is a tax payer.
The next speaker is Pat Thebert. The next speaker is Pat Thebert. He didn't say anything about it. And then Red McClanny will be next. If you can go ahead and start making your way up.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hello, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. Thank you for having us. My name is Pat Thebert. I work at, uh, West Neck Intermediate Care Facility in the Human Services Department. We recognize the changes you are proposing to the school budgets, but our budgets need to be adjustment, adjusted to. We hope there is some serious increase, including recognizing our years of service at the upcoming market study. While we appreciate the presentations made by department heads in October regarding the incredible understaffing situation, we feel that the city council did not get the full picture of the real urgency of the situation. We cannot hire or retain staff on these very low salaries. Workers can literally get a job at Walmart, Dunkin' Donuts, Target, make, I'm sorry, with no necessary training, CDL, or healthcare certifications, or the risk we bear for more money. Of course, we cannot retain good staff that way. Human Services is also going through a major understaffing crisis right now. Many of, many of us are being forced to stay overtime or pressured to work on weekends to cover. We hear there is over 25% of our staff with COVID right now. The city has not done enough to put in place safety measures in this pandemic. We believe that we know what type of measures would keep us safe, but no one is asking the staff. We believe that collective bargaining would allow us to input on these critical policies and help improve our morale and keep us all safe. Sorry. City employees run the city, and we know what it takes to keep it going. We need a real voice in the job through a union to help retain staff and dignified working conditions. We request you move forward on the collective bargaining resolution. We appreciate the mayor's proposal, uh, to establish a task force to move forward with collective bargaining in September 28th meeting, but it has been more than three months ago, and we have not heard of the group even having a first meeting. We also sent the mayor and council letters to request that someone from our organization be on the task force to offer our input. When I read about Dr. King's support workers organizing a union to challenge unsafe work conditions in Memphis and their fight for collective bargaining over 50 years ago, I can't help but be disappointed that we are still fighting for the same rights today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker. The next speaker is Red McClanny. After Mr. McClanny is Devin Conley.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone else. This is City Council that's on the panel here this evening. Uh, again, as they stated, we're, we're grateful to see that there's some movement in, uh, regards to what's going on with the school board. But we also recognize that there are other things that needs to be addressed. And being a city worker and living in the city of Virginia Beach all of my life and working in the private sector, not only working for the city, I've experienced some things over the years. And the question that I have this evening is why? Why are we overlooked? Why are we underpaid? Why are we undervalued? On the heels of celebrating and remembering a civil rights icon, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, who gave his life, I repeat- I repeat, he gave his life fighting for social and economic justice. Yet, I find myself standing here asking, why? That being said, I feel it appropriate to draw excerpts from a few of his speeches to address you all this evening. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That you ought to make a career of humanity, to commit yourselves to the noble struggle for equal rights. That whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. So I say, we have to confront the systemic racism and the racial disparities, disparities that manipulates your decision-making when it comes to social and economic equality. We have to address the issue. Systemic racism is an issue. It is an issue. And I've, I've mentioned before, and I get feedback, that's a large elephant in the room. But we need to tackle the elephant. So I ask you again, why? It's no secret that Public Works, the labor force, is predominantly minority. And I would beg without question to say that the majority of that minority is African-American. In this country's history, there's a history of racism, and this city has not escaped it. And I believe that collective bargaining is a step in helping us to bridge that racial divide. Because it is an issue. I leave you with this. For my faith, what does God require of you? That you act justly, do what's right, that you love mercy and walk humbly before Him. Justice, love, and humility will help us achieve equality, but we must deal with the question, why?
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Devin Conley. Devin Conley. And then it will be Shamika Hall.
Good evening. Doing good, thank you.
Hello, Mayor Dyer and City Council members. My name is Devon Conley. I have worked as a motor equipment operator three in Highway Stormwater Section of Public Works Department for over twelve years. We recognize the changes you are proposing to the school budget, but ours need adjustment too. We understand that the city is currently undergoing a market study analysis of employee wages. We hope that you really consider significant changes in the salary grades. In November, Virginia Commonwealth Institute for Fiscal Analysis releases a report that found that nine out of ten city employees make less than sixty-five thousand. It takes an effort to raise even a single child within the Virginia Beach city limits. For the last several months, hundreds of city workers have quit their jobs out of the frustration with the stressful work environment, low pay, and lack of real voice. One of the major reasons we are losing so many staff and cannot hire new ones is because the wages are so low. Our union looked at all the major cities and similar size and cost of living in the Mid-Atlantic region, including Charlotte, Riley, Alexandria, and others, and found that, for instance, for a heavy equipment operator, Virginia Beach is three thousand one hundred and twenty-one below. For sanitation operator four, it is seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven below the market average. So we need some serious investment and changes to our wage scales that recognize our years of service. We are one of the only cities in the region of our size that does not have at least a fifteen minimum wage for the city employee. And currently, one thousand one hundred and forty-two city employees make less than fifteen per hour. We think having a real seat at the table via collective bargaining can help us make significant improvement in our wages to help retain qualified staff to keep our beautiful city running. And I quote again from Dr. King, "We must guard against being fooled by the false slogans such as the right to work." It purp-, it's purpose is to destroy labor unions and the freedom of collective bargaining by which unions have improved wages and working conditions. Everyone, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Shamika Hall. Shamika Hall. Teresa Stanley. And after Ms. Stanley will be Hannah Borja. Go ahead, Ms. Stanley.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. As we look at the budget items this evening, it is really appropriate that it is on the time of Martin Luther King's celebration and that we support city workers in their quest for collective bargaining. Dr. King was a champion of worker rights, including the right to organize, and was in Memphis supporting city sanitation workers when he was assassinated. I'm speaking on behalf of the Tidewater Source of Justice and the dismantling racism working community comprised of hundreds of members, the majority who live in Virginia Beach, to express our support for Virginia Beach city employees who seek a resolution by City Council supporting a discussion of collective bargaining with the city manager. Without city workers, our drinking water does not flow, our streets are not safe, our parks are cluttered, our sewer lines back up, garbage piles up, our children are not taught, and we are threatened with property fires. We are deeply grateful for these essential workers that keep this city a beautiful vacation destination as well as a place of pride for those of us who call Virginia Beach home. We do not want our city services to decline. The General Assembly passed legislation that has repealed prohibiting public sector collective bargaining. Prior to that, Virginia was only one of three states that didn't allow it. The law allows governments to bargain collectively with their employees upon adopting an ordinance or a resolution. We stand with the workers who are speaking out for a real voice. That's all they want, is a real voice, to address safety, dignity, living wages, and an end to institutional racism on the job. We thank the mayor and the City Council for your September twenty-eighth decision to form a task force to address the issue, but so far, we've seen no activity. We are urging City Council to move forward to address the issue and to ensure that city workers will have a real voice at the table and just the ability to negotiate for their wages, benefits, and working conditions directly with the city manager. As you heard, the recent Commonwealth Institute study determined that nine out of ten of the Virginia Beach city workers cannot attain an adequate standard of living on what they're paid if they have even one child. As people of conscience, we have to take responsibility for the sin of systemic racism that has resulted in disproportionate numbers of the lowest-paid workers in essential public service, being people of color and women. It is a moral imperative that we stand with those that are working to dismantle oppressive and economic practices. We believe that our economy must serve all people, all people, in order for our city to thrive. We know that we can count on you as leaders for the economic and common good of Virginia Beach to support these valuable workers that are speaking out to ensure through collective bargaining that these critical human rights issues will be addressed now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Hannah Borja, and then Dr. James Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mel Borja, and I am the Worker Power Policy Analyst for the Commonwealth Institute of Fiscal Analysis, a nonprofit organization that advances racial and economic justice in Virginia. Our organization has been referenced in several remarks this evening. We support an inclusive and comprehensive collective bargaining ordinance because key findings from an analysis we published in November demonstrate that passing this ordinance is an economic and racial justice imperative for city employees. Research also shows that collective bargaining benefits working people and communities as a whole, since the resulting reduction in turnover and increase in employee voice improves the quality of public services. Quite frankly, far too many local public employees in Virginia Beach cannot afford to live in the city they serve. A review of city employee classifications and maximum pay for those roles shows that four in ten Virginia Beach city employees could not afford to support themselves in Virginia Beach at a modest yet adequate standard of living. Most alarmingly, nine in ten could not attain an adequate standard of living on what they are paid if they have children. Virginia has a nearly thirty percent pay penalty for public employees compared to their similar private sector peers. The idea that public sector benefits alone make up for this gap is misguided. In Virginia, we can say for certain that pension and healthcare benefits do not make up for these pay penalties. When you account for public sector benefits, the compensation gap between similar private and public employees is still twenty-eight percent. Studies show that unions, however, help narrow the public sector pay gap by nearly two-thirds. Furthermore, due to the cumulative impact of past and present systemic discrimination, workers of color are often in lower-paid positions and are likely to benefit the most from protections of collective bargaining. The fair and clear standards provided by unionization particularly help black and Latino workers. And because women are more likely than men to work in the public sector, strong collective bargaining rights can help address the broader problem of gender pay disparities. Collective bargaining is also good for Virginia Beach residents, regardless of if they work for the city. Collective bargaining will improve the quality of public services because they improve the conditions under which public employees provide those services. When employees are given adequate resources, appropriate staffing levels, and enhanced voice in the workplace through collective bargaining, turnover decreases and it becomes easier to recruit and retain new employees. The benefits of stronger public sector unions include fostering social mobility, advocating for better public services, raising labor standards in all sectors, lowering poverty, and reducing expenditures on safety net programs. Thank you for your time and consideration of the benefits of a broad and inclusive collective bargaining ordinance that recognizes the rights of all city employees and does not prevent workers from bargaining over the conditions of their workplace.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. James Allen, and then Barbara Messner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I stand before you as the president of Virginia Beach and a Denominational Ministers Conference, and I've come today to talk to you all in support of unionizing our city workers. The Virginia Beach oceanfront will not be very inviting to tourists if the water's not clean, if the sewers are not functioning properly, if we have water main breaks that our people can't get to and fix. These people who have come and stood before you today are the citizens of this city who's looking to you to be their leaders and to do the right thing. And quite honestly, I, I am not necessarily a fan of your task force, having been invited to a couple and seeing that a lot of times it's a lot of talk and nothing else. These people need action. They need action now. They need someone on this council to stand up and put to a vote whether or not you are going to approve their resolution for them to form the union so that they can collectively bargain for a working, livable wage for themselves and their families. These are the people who sit in our churches and our congregations every Sunday. We look at them, we look at their families, we look at their children. We know how they struggle. And one thing that they know is that we have their backs, and we are educating them on the power of their vote. And we want to see who on this council is going to be for the people of Virginia Beach and who's not. Because for those of you who refuse to support the people of Virginia Beach, then why are we supporting you? Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner, and after Ms. Messner is Diana Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening. You know, there are a lot of people that are showing up for the first time, they're risking their jobs, and they have a right to be seen on that camera. They have a right to be seen on that camera. And y'all decide what the clerk tells the video services people. Okay, and they're, they're all excellent speakers. But this is on the school. School reversion. Fifty-four million. Twenty-twenty-one school operating reversion, money they haven't spent. Establish a capital project. Replace payroll system. Don't replace it, just figure out who's not doing it correctly. Uh, the school bus fleet. You use the school buses for something in the water, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? You, you put the school buses that you- The school buses are used not just for something in the water, they're used for all events. Because there's no parking at the oceanfront. And, and then when they're, they're used up and in horrible condition, you put them on the sand and you let the monster trucks crash them, like the kids are supposed to see their school bus crash. I'm, I'm so tired of what y'all do, I could scream. Okay? And, and the money that's wasted for the schools. Public Private Education Act, two thousand and two. You use school money for the sports center, for the, uh, for the rec centers, for everything. Ms. Wooten, you want another rec center? I'd like a decent neighborhood, you know, where the kids can have a, a park. You and Ms. Henley came out to look at Red Wing. Okay, two hundred and fifty thousand for something in the water for Pharrell to advertise so everybody can, uh, on TV, to get a short-term rental. No wonder we don't have affordable housing, everything's short-term rentals. Three hundred and fifty thousand for the school buses. Yeah. But every one of you can direct the video services to zoom in and show the people speaking. It's zoomed way out, and we cannot see them. Thank you.
The next speaker is Diana Howard. After Ms. Howard is Sarah Gerloff.
Welcome, Diana, how you doing?
Hi, how you doing? It's cold out there. Anyway, um, on the reversion funds, every year, um, they always come back to you with money that they haven't spent. And for some reason, we think that we have to do that, we have to give that to them. It's not their money, it's our money, it's taxpayers' money. So, everything that they decided they want to put in their advance payment on, on a new school, a lot of kids aren't even being registered for school, so I don't know why we're building new schools. In fact, we even have a, a school down Lynn Haven, I think it's Plaza. It still has portables. I mean, why aren't you addressing that? Anyway. With all the money that the state has in excess, they plan on giving a lot more money for schools this year, right? And they're probably going to give a lot more money for a lot of other things. And they're going to address tax relief because naturally, they overtaxed us because they didn't do parity with federal standard deduction. They are planning to address that, so we should be getting a relief in taxes there. I think you all should be doing that as well, right? I appreciate that you, um, did pay compression, that you gave bonuses to everybody, that you, um, did, um, raises and benefits. You increased all that for the employees and everything. What you didn't address was the taxpayers. This is our money, and you should be like returning some of it to us. Or, like you just did the referendum and you, everybody voted in favor because they wanted to have the flooding addressed. Put that money towards that so that you don't have to raise our taxes so much to address the billions, was it half a billion? Half a billion dollars in, in the flooding that needs to be done. So, remember when- So, remember when Mr. Tower put forth two million dollars to help out businesses and everything? How Councilman Branch said, "We should wait to the budget process"? Well, I think you should wait to the budget process for this, so we know how much money that they need for what, and how much money you're going to get from the state, from the federal government, and then address everything in the budget process and not do the reversion, and address the taxpayers of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Gerloff, and then Gary McCollum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was eating, sorry. So, no emergency is just cause to suppress the law of the land, our constitution, that is. Those that seek to suppress God's law are placing themselves above God's supreme law and thus warring against the Creator. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has received federal funding due to the pan epidemic through the CARES Act. These funds must be used for, according to the CARES Act, prevention of, reduction of, or response to COVID. We are responsible for our own health, not the government. We've already seen the government's response to COVID and what a disaster it has been to the people of this country. Because of these unlawful COVID measures that have forced, that are being forced upon people, our children have been socially and emotionally harmed. We have been, we have seen test scores go down as depression and suicide rates have gone up. I believe taking money from our obviously rogue government is a bad idea since there are unlawful strings attached. They are not, you are not helping Lady Liberty by taking money and accepting this money and implementing these unlawful controlling measures. So, I went through some of the stuff that we're spending money on. First of all, this is alarming to me, right off the bat here, support socio-emotional programs. Now, I want to know what they mean by that, because I've been over there at the school board, and socio-emotional programs, from what I've seen, is social emotional learning, which is CRT, which is equity training. It is not good for our kids.
Folks, please respect the speaker.
When you look into it, it is basically saying that all God's children are born racist, and that is not true. God does not make junk. Here, it says support, I'm just going to read some of this. Okay, so equitable services, five thousand dollars. Support staff to manage CARES Act, fifty thousand dollars. Additional instructional personnel to accommodate modified schedules. I don't know why we need that, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars. COVID-nineteen health assessment team, a hundred thousand dollars. Hourly wage wages for school nurses to support community vaccination efforts, a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we do know that the vaccine, which is its so-called vaccine, is actually killing people now, it's very harmful. I've seen where young people have dropped dead of heart attacks, which that has not happened in our history, and they are connecting them to the vaccine. It's happening more and more every day, I'm seeing more and more of it in the news.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum. After Mr. McCollum is Latasha Holloway.
Mr. Mayor, council, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Hope you're feeling bad, we've been praying for you.
I appreciate it. I tell you to be honest, I had a lot to say tonight, but I'm just so impressed seeing city workers come out here and say what they said. It takes, it takes a lot of courage to stand in front of this body and tell you the truth. Matter of fact, you've heard a lot about Dr. King, one of my fraternity brothers. We celebrated his life, his legacy yesterday, and during that speech, it was mentioned tonight, during that speech, the night before he was assassinated, April third, nineteen sixty-eight, fifty-four years ago, almost, he talked about why people don't speak up. As a matter of fact, he used the parable of the Good Samaritan. He talked about why the Levite passed by. He talked about why the priests passed by. But the Good Samaritan stopped, and that's why you see these people stopping right now. I, I'm not a sanitation worker, but I can't just pass by and let what's happening to our city workers continue. That's why the Virginia Beach Internet Dominational Ministers Conference is here, that's why Do the Right Things is here, that's why you heard Teresa Stanley and others who are joining in this effort, because we're not going to pass by on the other side. The reason why you don't see more people out here is because, frankly, they are afraid. And I'm just going to say it, they're afraid of retribution in this city. Some workers are afraid that they may get fired, even for showing up here tonight. I'm just going to tell you the truth, but see, here's the thing, we're not going to let fear stop us. God did not give us a spirit of fear, but a power, love, and a sound mind, and that's why you saw these folks stand up tonight. Dr. King also said in that speech, he said, "Listen, a man can't ride your back unless it's bent." And you see these workers, they are standing up for what's right, and I would hope that we keep this a great city by making sure that we have clean water, that we have sewers that function, that we can fix water breaks, that we can do all the things that we need to do, but you can't do those just with dollars. You need labor to do that. You need men and women who are able to do the work, and they can't do the work if they can't support their families. And so I implore you, let's not waste time on this, let's make sure we do the right thing, and let's support their organizing effort so that we can get these families taken care of and we can keep our city great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
The next speaker is Latasha Holloway. After Ms. Holloway is Blaisen Bloom.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Latasha Holloway, and today I stand in solidarity with the newly-formed Virginia Beach City Workers Union, UE-111. This movement is about fairness and respect. It's about the disrespect and abuse our city workers have had to endure because of the failed leadership of this body. The council fails the good citizens of this city each time it pays its crony lawyers to continue the discriminatory practices and policies that suppress our voices, and we won't stand for it anymore. The continuous waste of our tax dollars to discriminate against us is disrespectful. It's just more of the same double talk that we've become accustomed to receiving from our bankrupt leadership, starting with you, Mr. Dyer. Talking out of both sides of your neck, as my grandmother would say. Promising our workers that you will start the conversation, start the process, and once again, doing nothing. Do us all a great favor, Mr. Dyer. Tenure your resignation. Save the citizens of this great city of Virginia Beach the embarrassment of exposing the evidence of your malfeasance through this recall. Because I can tell you, I will continue to fight for the relief that you failed to bring this city. I plan to protect our workers through our nonprofit in educating our workers about the whistleblower protection laws to ensure that they don't experience any further retaliatory actions that this government and this city is known for. I stand shoulder to shoulder with every overworked, every abused, every underpaid, and every dedicated worker to this city to let it be known that we can do it. We can provide livable wages. We can provide safe working environments. We can provide to all of our workers an opportunity for, equitable opportunities for our workers so that we can diversify this city once and for all. We can do it. UE-111, can we do it?
Yes!
We can do it.
The next speaker is Blaisen Bloom. After Mr. Bloom is Andrew Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I come here as representative and co-chair of the Hampton Roads Green Party, but I assure you that the issue I will be discussing is not partisan, it is one of human rights. It is one of rights guaranteed in our constitution when we talk of the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, the ones that this nation was supposedly founded on. And so when we talk about this educational budget, we understand that funding our schools is an important aspect to ensuring that our children, ensuring our children's successes. But we also must acknowledge that school is not the only place to ensure that our youth succeed. Success comes not only in the classroom, but in the environments at home. And when our workers cannot afford to care for their families in the city, how does that support our students? How does that ensure that the youth of today will be able to succeed for tomorrow, to ensure that this city, that Hampton Roads, that this nation will be able to become better, will be able to become greater than what it is today? We need collective bargaining for our city employees. They need the right to be able to stand up and say, "We're not being paid enough, the conditions we're working in aren't safe." We need, that they need rights, and they deserve the right to say what they need, the rights to democracy that we have cherished so much as a nation. These workers, their families, they deserve more than what's been given to them. We deserve more as a city, as an area, to ensure that the workers are able to be able to do what they can. Collective bargaining isn't just for those now, it's for those who will come after. It is for the youth as they inherit this world, but it's also for us to ensure that the, that the, that the needs of the city are handled, that the trash doesn't pile up. And you know what? I don't need to go through, because speaker after speaker has mentioned the consequences of inaction, have listed how this city will suffer, and in fact, how this area will suffer. Hampton Roads is unified, what affects one city affects all. So I ask you, take a stand, lead Hampton Roads in showing that there is a better way, that we can ensure that our workers, our municipal workers in each city, that if they have a right to speak their minds, to stand up and say that we need this so that we can do better, that it will happen, and that the city, each and every city in our area, will succeed, will do better. Take that stand, be the leaders. I know you can. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Jackson and then Tim McCarthy.
Welcome.
Good evening, city council. Let me put this in some sort of business model. You're the president, and here's your CEOs and COOs and this business model. Let me tell you how that works. We, the people, are the board of directors. We will tell you whether you will stay in the position you're in. We do that when we vote. There's too many missing pieces here, but we understand that when the right people, when the right people, whether it's oceanfront or wherever they hang out at, ask for money, we can find money. Every time I drive down Atlantic and I go out towards Shore Drive, there's this great function there, Cavalier Hotel. I remember when you were asking us for money to do that, to give to somebody so they could do this project. But we people can't feed their families? What is the problem with that? I don't understand. But what I do understand is body language. I sat here and I've watched you. I've watched you. I've watched your body language. For yours sure, I see you smiling. I've watched that. This isn't funny. It's not funny to the people that it is. It's not for somebody to sit around and doodle on paper, look up in the air, look at their Remember, we are the ones that determine whether you sit in those seats. We are the ones that determine that. We are the ones that drive this city. We do that. We can pay people not to do anything with land, but we can't pay employees. That's a problem. It's not a problem to you all, maybe, and maybe you don't care. The projected look that we see is that you don't care. And an item sits on a table forever and ever and ever, and it appears that you don't do anything with it. What does that say to the people that come before you? What does that say? You don't care. You don't have to say it. Body language and action says it for you on a lot that you do here. Do the right thing for once.
The last speaker is Tim McCarthy.
Welcome, Tim.
Good evening. Nice to see you, mayor, and all members of the council. My wife and I have been residents of Virginia Beach for fifty-two years. If there are fifty weeks in a year, I figure we've been served for two-thousand-five-hundred weeks of garbage, water, and sewer service by our Public Works Department. I think it's about time for a change, for them to be provided fair wage, fair wages, and the right to unionize and the right to collective bargaining. For much of my adult life in Virginia Beach, as some of you might know, I have worked to advocate for affordable housing and for services to the homeless. One of the conclusions I've drawn over those many years is that the right to have a fair wage and to be paid fairly has a lot to do with being able to find housing in this city, and it's important. The time is now to make a change. The time is now to support our workers. I'd like to do it in the memory of a friend, a family friend of ours, Will Ses, Will, not Will Sesums, Will, who served on, in this city department for thirty years, he's now deceased, Will Forbes. His son is here with us this evening. So, in the memory of Will Forbes, and in the memory of Martin Luther King, I ask that you make the right decision in support of collective bargaining, the support of the workers to unionize, and to be paid a fair wage so that they might be able to live in our beautiful city and continue to provide the service that we've all received in the city. So, the time is now, I ask you, I implore you, to make this decision for collective bargaining now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all, I really appreciate your input and you coming tonight on a cold night. I want to, okay, now I'm going to read the speaker policy as we go forward. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the informal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each items that have been registered... the speaker and identify each items that have been registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and ensure that the viewpoints of all persons are respected. The best way to do this is to strive for civility and respect. Okay?
Mayor, um, we have one item I guess we need to talk, need to talk about before I call for Ms. Mastner to come up on number three, planning. The applicant had requested deferral and that's what you all had said you would do during the informal session, but he's here and wants to just go for approval. We only have one speaker signed up. So I don't know if you want to put that on consent for, I just wanted to.
Planning item three, um, originally the, um, applicant requested a deferral, okay? Folks, please. Um, and now, uh, from what I understand, the situation from, uh, the request for the deferral has been resolved and the applicant wants to, you know, cha- uh, re- uh, you know, remove the request for a deferral.
That is correct.
And, and, but is, all I asking is, he's asserting that it's all been approved, is the person that wasn't, where's the independent authentication that all the issues have been resolved? You know, we're taking, I'm looking for, who besides him is saying it resolved? That's important, Mr. Mayor, I think.
I think at this point it might be a good idea just to pull it, you know, for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Ms. Mastner? Ms. Mastner, the items that are pulled are.
Thank you.
J3.
Okay, wait. J3.
J4.
Okay.
K2.
K2.
K3.
K3.
Yes.
Okay, so I have to think on all the rest?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can somebody, Mayor Dyer, it is your responsibility to have protocol. Would you please explain to these people that the item they spoke on was not on the agenda? They just spoke on this. That you have to put it on the agenda in order to vote on it. That, the item was the school board reversion funds.
It was a public comment and we extended the courtesy. There was some, uh, you know, words that matched up in terms of disposition.
That's not the point.
Okay, at this point, Ms. Mastner, will you go forward?
Okay, I will.
The first item.
Okay. But there's people yelling and you're not calming them down. That's my point. Okay, J, J1. Amend ordinance and resolution, amend. Section 1.3, 1 through 30, stormwater management ordinance. You want to amend how we appeal stormwater problems?
That, that is going to be deferred.
That's not the one, uh, that's not what she just had me circle.
You know, it's on the consent agenda for deferral.
Uh, 1A? 1A is what I read. The, the one for deferral is, is B. I'm reading 1.
All right.
Okay. And even if it's deferred, we can still speak. You, you miss managing the funds which has been brought out and one thing on, uh, you know, having enough workers, it's their, it's their pension, it's their overtime, it's a lot of things. But the 567 million that you spent a fortune advertising for, for the bond referendum, it's, it's to mitigate. You're not fixing this. All these problems continue. And as far as being able to appeal, you know, all right, so 3.
Nope.
Uh, 2. Resolution to direct the city attorney, Mr. Dehaney, to file a petition of writ of, it's like children in here giggling.
The city attorney is Mr. Stiles.
The city attorney, okay, city manager.
Congratulations on your dual role, Mr. Dehaney.
Okay, all right, so, oh, city attorney, Mr. Stiles, sorry. Y'all work in together. What, it's like, um, neither one of you answer anything and you're, you're paid by council, you work for them, you don't work for us, and you give your opinions, not legal rulings. That's Colin Staley, who also has conflicts. So thank you for reminding me, Mr. Dehaney, because you, you meet with all the civic leagues, but, you know, you haven't met with, uh, other people who've been emailing you or responded. So I'm glad you think it's funny and I'm glad you came back to your seat. Uh, for a change. And as far as a writ of special elections, you know, this has been going on since Will Sesums, uh, won his election and then resigned, all these special elections. You're not, it shouldn't, somebody shouldn't be running, you know, midterm. So people need to be paying attention to, uh, all these districts. Okay, 3.
No, ma'am. 3 and 4 have been pulled.
I, I know, I'm going over to 4, thank you.
No, ma'am, 4's pulled too.
4's pulled, okay, 5. You know, the whole thing, why don't, why do you have a publish advertise agenda and you pull what you want and you put it back? That's not due process. It is not due process. And you don't add things and delete things. 5, resolution to. And, and thank you for turning that on. It's about time you turned it on. It took a whole roomful of people to notice before you, you know, zoomed in and showed the speakers. A resolution to authorize and direct city manager, Mr. Dehaney, to execute a project participation agreement between City of Virginia Beach and Southside Network Authority. We don't need any more authorities. It's your responsibility and nothing in the city's working. You shouldn't be, uh, having any more projects until you have employees that can do the work, until you can retain police officers and allow them to do their jobs. So, you know, Mr. Jackson was talking about who's in charge. You know, the city hires the city manager, but they work together. He, he doesn't work independently. Okay, 6. Ordinance to accept and appropriate $300,000 from Landmark Foundation to the 2122 Public Health Operating Budget. So you want to take, um, $300,000 from some foundation, I don't know if it's Landmark Pilot, a third of a million, and authorize a grant-supported position for a baby care program. Do you know that Parks and Rec, who you, you've been having all these, um, bribes, bonuses, everything to get people to come back to work? You know, the city shouldn't be, uh, competing in the, against the private industry on childcare. B, 547,000, over a half a million, from Department of Justice to 2122 Commonwealth Attorney. Operating budget, authorize 25% in-kind grant match by the Commonwealth Attorneys for one full-time position. Over a half a million dollars for one full-time position in drug treatment court. Do you know how many, how long drug trafficking's been going on in this city and you haven't done a friggin' thing? And some of the hotel developers were convicted in the 80s and you're still doing business with them? You're not managing the city, you're not keeping us safe, and a lot of people are starting to pay attention. Okay, K, planning?
Uh, ma'am, Mayor needs to open a public.
Open a public hearing on planning.
All right. Okay, 3 is pull 1. Hunt Club, uh, condo association. Modification of conditions, rate increase, increase the number of multifamily dwellings by 11. District 1, formerly Kempsville. Right in the middle of, uh, you know, everything going on before the budget. You have different districts. This, this is total insanity. But multifamily is, um, you know, we have high density, high density everywhere. Traffic is a nightmare. Crime is a nightmare. I've seen accidents and it's not even noted. It's a major accident. Ms. Henley asked, "Oh, why do you talk about, I didn't know about the accident at General Booth and Oceana." Maybe you should pay attention to these things and look at the, uh, police scanner.
Yeah, but, could you please stick to the.
I, I am, um, I am. This is Princess Anne. That's, um, Princess Anne District. Okay, well, Hunt Club, same thing, Kempsville. Anyway, the bottom line is, all of you talk about caring about these things and you say you're not going to vote for any more, uh, uncontrolled growth and you vote for it. Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, Mr. Jones, you all said you wouldn't vote for any more uncontrolled growth, short-term rentals. It's all the same thing. Okay, 2 and 3 are pulled.
No, 3 and 4.
Nope, 2 and 3.
Oh, 2 and 3, my apologies.
That's all right. That's okay. It does get confusing when you pull everything and mix it up and it's not what's advertised, it's not what's printed here, it's not in order.
Especially when we're here a long time.
Oh, well, maybe that's because you wanted to do all your, uh, Boy Scouts and all your other stuff that could be a special, you could have a special meeting for that. You're the one that fills the chambers. Who you want, when you want, et cetera. 2508 Pacific Avenue, conditional use permit, short-term rental at 2510, 2514, 2518, 2522, 2526, and 2530 Pacific Avenue. Formerly District 6, Mr. Tower, who has never answered one email. Not one. And you have a conflict, you said you weren't going to run again, now you say you're not going to run again. How do we know what, what's going on? And you have a conflict. So, um, you know, the oceanfront is a nightmare, all the police, you know, you have the police protecting certain areas. Crime is other places. I brought that up to Mr. Rouse before. Police need to take care of every neighborhood. Okay? Okay. 5 and 6 are pulled?
No, ma'am.
Oh, they're not? Okay. I usually bring a different pencil so I can see which is pulled and which, which isn't. Okay, ORP Ventures. I assume that's Ocean Resort Properties. Almost all of these people doing short-term rentals are investors. And they, they create these LLC, limited liability corporations. Conditional use permit, short-term rental. 603 20th Street. Oh, by the way, Mr. Berlucci, you're, um, my email to you, uh, was rejected. Okay, um, 603 20th Street, District 6, formerly Beach, Mr. Tower. There's too many short-term rentals. These people are talking about affording a place to stay. Even if you pay them more, there's no place to stay. Everything is, um, year-round resort and short-term rentals all over the city. There are no decent neighborhoods anymore. And 6 is the same thing. ORP Ventures, LLC, conditional use permit. 19th Street. The Vibe District, city tax, state and city subsidized Vibe District. And Mr. Berlucci and Mr. Dyer go to all these parties down there, you know, all the music blasting and, you know, all these people that lived there in what was affordable, hide in, you know, these properties, they look out their window and there's a giant party and drinking going on in public. Okay, 410 19th Street, Unit 101, 102, 103, 201, 202. 412, Unit 101, 102, 201, 202. Formerly Beach District. So Ms. Wilson's not here. She's, that's hers. You know, none of y'all have to show up. You don't have to have an excuse. You don't have to pretend you have something you don't. So I'm opposed because you're destroying the ability for anybody to have a rental or a home that's affordable and be, and be safe. And the police and, uh, police fire and rescue, you know, they're understaffed and they're overworked. Okay, and all these list of appointments that I'm not allowed to speak on, you know, you appoint who you want to all these commissions. Do your job. Don't appoint people, don't create authorities and don't waste their money.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions, item J1, which is to defer to February the 1st. Is ordinance to amend, A, Section 1.3 and 1-30 of Stormwater Management Ordinance, Appendix D, Ray Stormwater Appeals Board, and B, 1, uh, Section 1.2, Public Works Design Standards Manual, Ray Variances, which was deferred from November the 9th, 2021. Item J, uh, item J2, which is the resolution to direct the city attorney to file a petition for writ, the special election, Ray Office of the Council Member in District 1, formerly District 2, Kempsville. Item J5, which is a resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a project participation agreement. Virginia Beach and the Southside Network Authority. Item J6, which is the, uh, ordinances to accept and appropriate, A, $300,000 from the Landmark Foundation for the fiscal year 2021, 22 Public Health Operating Budget and authorize grant-supported positions for a baby care program. And B, uh, 547,358 from the Virginia Department of Justice to the fiscal year 2021, 22 Commonwealth Attorneys Operating Budget and authorize 25% in-kind grant match by the Commonwealth Attorneys and one grant-funded full-time position in Human Services, Ray Drug Treatment Court.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Under planning for consent, item K1, which is the application of Hunt Club Condominium Association Inc. for a modification of conditions, Ray, increase the number of multifamily dwellings by 11 at 120 Laughlin Way, District 1, Kempsville District. Click Court will please note that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item, uh, K4, which is the application of, uh, 2508 Pacific Avenue LLC for a conditional, uh, use permit, Ray, short-term rental at 2510, 2514, 2518, 2522, 2526, and 2530 Pacific Avenue, District 6, uh, in the. Beach District. Item five, which is ORP Ventures LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rental at six oh three Twentieth Street, District Six, or Beach District. And item, and item six, which is ORP Ventures LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rentals at four-ten Nineteenth Street, Units 101, 102, 103, 201, 202, and fourth twelve Nineteenth Street, item, Unit 101, 102, 201, and 202. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any other discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Councilmember Jones noting Mr. Moss's nay vote.
Okay, going back to ordinances and resolution, resolution to direct the city attorney to end the appeal in the Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach et al. litigation requested by Councilmember Rouse.
First speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Melissa Lukasen.
Please repeat that, please.
Number three.
Number three. Under ordinances and resolution three. Resolution. Resolution to direct city attorney, Mark Stiles, who came from Wilcox Savage in 1999, along with Rod Ingram, who came from a different law firm. Okay. To end the appeal in the Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach, which is against most of y'all. And in the appeal, you've already spent about $10 million. You never should have spent one penny because it was against you. Don't use air money. And now, you know, this request, who knows what you'll do. But the bottom line is, not only did you use all the city attorney staff, but you hired Baker Hostedler, an outside law firm. You've been hiring outside law firms at the rate of like $600 an hour for over 20 years. And before certain people had my Facebook pages shut down, I was showing all the conflicts, everything, took me five years. I know who took them down. I have proof. There will be a reckoning for a lot of things. And you want to spend $200,000 to help market the changes to the, you know, the new, what do you call them? The new districts? The voter registrar can notify us, you shouldn't spend $200,000.
No, this is on item number three. You know, this is.
Right, in the appeal.
Yes.
Right, on the Holloway case, which is about the redistricting. And you want to spend $200,000 on top of everything else you've spent to market it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, the next speaker is Melissa Lukasen.
Thank you.
After Ms. Lukasen is Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
Well, as a business owner, I just would like to thank the workers that came and spoke because I have 23 employees, eight of which are hourly employees, and we pay $16 an hour at our business, and we also pay 100% of our health insurance premiums for our employees. So, the fact that the city isn't up to par with that, shame on you guys. Good evening. After reading the 135-page order on this case, I'm seriously concerned about the motivation behind why any council member before me would ever consider appealing this decision. I tried to look at this objectively, what is the goal of the appeal? After being presented with a lot of empirical data, because I read the 135 pages, most of them, the important parts. There's testimony, an expert opinion of a judge who's exponentially more qualified than every single one of you put together. Why would you think an appeal is even a consideration? To the council members that voted against the 2020 district voting resolution, I understand you have a vested interest not engaging the people. The powers of the people, so why would you want to vote for a resolution that threatens your power? I find it interesting, beginning in 1998, that the three at-large positions were all held by Republicans until 2014. After 10 years of listening to a Democratic woman mayor, it seems like someone wanted to rig the system to maintain the status quo. She stayed for 10 more years, but look at what patience and power yield. How embarrassed were you when told that the voting system that got you elected is unconstitutional? Has been, has been since inception, and required supervision to establish a new voting system to ensure fair representation, especially for minorities? The question is why appeal? I would like to hear from those that oppose the generous $1.6 million settlement paid with taxpayer money to why. No word salad, just a clear and concise answer. I strongly oppose one penny spent fighting against the people's will. You should be throwing yourself at the mercy of the court and the people, apologizing for your deficiencies and willing to do what it takes to make sure every citizen in this city is fairly represented, especially minorities. How does Virginia Beach Fire and EMS feel about our city spending millions more to fight a losing court battle that affects their vote as citizens and as first responders, serving our city? Have you found the money to offer them the same education and longevity incentives as was given to the Sheriff's Department on January 4th? Why not provide VBPD with a $3,000 bonus per officer like the Sheriff's Department received for their deputies? Before you consider that, I will make a request for the chief of police to mandate his officers to wear masks in hospital facilities. These pictures were taken two days ago. These officers were maskless for more than five hours when accompanying a patient in the emergency department. A nurse offered them a mask to which they declined. Hospital security says that their attitude is that the chief doesn't require them to wear them. If their officers were in civilian clothes at the hospital, they would be required to wear a mask and refuse to allow them to be in the hospital. What does that tell you about law enforcement? Thank you.
Andrew Jackson?
I guess I'm confused. I don't know. Since I was one of the persons involved, I was also one of the persons that sat down, the last time we rearranged districts and that kind of thing, I think, myself and Mr. Jones and I think it was Carl Wright and Jim Wood. We've been over this, we know what the districts are, we knew that was wrong. And we've talked about this, it's not like this just came up. And we've battled this in court. And we spent millions. I don't even know why we would even, and we just talked about money, my God. I don't understand why we would even think about spending another million, playing with something that you're not going to win. It's just, you're not going to win. The first thing is, you knew, and I knew, and everybody that's been here for a while, knew that that system was unfair. We knew that. We talked about it, we even, I even gathered enough folks for a while and we had a petition. We were going to try to do, we just didn't get enough people on there before election time. We were going through the circuit court. So, this is not a new thing. Why this is even on here for any kind of debate or decision other than it shouldn't have to even be here, this should be over. The judge made a decision, it's over. I almost want to say, stop it. I've been here and got involved in politics in this city when I first made this city my home in 1975 and I supported our previous mayor, Myra Overdog, I helped her with her campaign. I've been looking at this thing ever since then. We we need to get our act together and understand that this is a diverse city. Get over that other stuff, there is no up here and down here. We're diverse. And we need to act like we're diverse. Get it through your head. We're diverse, we're going to have to act that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary McCallum?
Mayor, council. Councilman Rouse, thank you for bringing this to the table. I'm going to talk about the money in a second, but we know that from a materiality point of view, relatively speaking, it's not a whole lot of money. But I want to make sure I understand, how did we make the decision to move forward with the appeal, with this appeal? Was there ever a vote? Or was this like some silent majority that decided that you were going to do this? And I think, again, Councilman Rouse, thank you for bringing this to the attention because I think taxpayers need to know how this decision was made and where each of you stand individually on this issue. Some of you have spoken out publicly, I've heard from some of you publicly, where you stand on the issue. But we haven't heard from everybody. So what are you afraid of? Let's take a vote. Let's support this resolution. Let's show the citizens of Virginia Beach whether you're for spending, continuing to spend millions of dollars to fight this lawsuit, to fight this appeal, to move forward with this appeal. But let me just say one other thing as I close. Whether you win the appeal or not, you're going to lose. Why does that sound? If you win the appeal, you win. No. Look at the judge ruling, look at those 135 pages. Look what's in there. And look what you're trying to defend. So even if you win the appeal, you're going to lose because the headline that people are going to see, not just here locally, not just in the pilot, not just here in Hampton Roads, but I'm talking about around the country, that you spent millions of dollars fighting to protect a voting system that discriminated against African-Americans and marginalized communities. That will be the headline. Is that really what you want for a city that wants to attract tourists? That you want people to come here and spend money? Is that the headline? And so I would ask you again, thank you, Councilman Rouse, for bringing this to the attention. Tell the voters tonight where you stand on the issue. And as Dr. Allen said earlier, be prepared to defend that. Those of you who are going to be on the ballot, seven of you are going to be on the ballot, be prepared to defend that decision in November. Because people want to know where you stand on the issue, so thank you very much. Please, please, please vote to let people know where you stand on the issue, thank you.
Last speaker is Carl Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Honestly, I didn't come in to speak tonight because I heard the workers was here, but when this item came up, I had to come up and speak. And it's getting hilarious, man. Mr. Berlucci, you got to know when to say when, listen. You can't win this thing. You know, it reminds me of when a guy, he got in trouble one time and he had a lawyer. And the lawyer was sucking him dry. And one of the guys was nervous, said, man, that lawyer got to get off his neck. You lost, you're dealing with the federal government, he didn't know when to say when. We got to know when to say when. You're fighting the federal government, you're fighting the state, you got people here making all these gestures, you've got the city workers here, this, I mean, they're up in arms, you know, sometime we got to know when to say when. And I mean, this thing right here, I want to commend our, our, too. Because it's becoming embarrassing. The court has spoken. Judge Jackson has said what he's going to say, and I know John and I went back and forth and John said, hey, man, you don't know, this is going to change, this, John, it's done. Stick the fork in it. It's over. Now, you can keep taking it back, and you just saw these good people come here and working hard saying they can't even afford to live in the city. But yet you would take dollars, millions of dollars, rather than give it to your hard-working citizen here in the city of Virginia Beach, your city workers. You'd rather spend that much money in a court to satisfy what group of people? Because a group of people that you're trying to satisfy, man, all they're going to do is, John's been around a long, they're going to turn on you once you, uh, once the people come at you to get you out of here. That's what's going to happen, I've been in this game a long time, they go, hey, oh, hell, let's get them out of there. You're lost. It's over. Now let's go to something else, let's help these people here. Now, you know, I didn't come, I came here just to listen to the folk and see what they had to say. They're trying to unionize because they don't feel like they can feed their families. Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you're doing well, you look well. But, you know, this thing here with this court situation, it's becoming embarrassing, people are talking about it all over the region. You know, Virginia Beach is lost. Not in a way to embarrass the city to say they've lost, but it was the wrong thing anyway. We should have never had a hybrid system like that in place. It was wrong. So let's suck it up. Ms. Henley, I know it's tough, you know, change is tough, sister, it is, for everybody, it's definitely for us, but let's get over it, let's move on. A new day is here. And I appreciate you all because I know this is a hard job to do, you know, but that appeal thing is really, it's embarrassing and we need to move on. So, with that, Happy New Year again to you all and.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rouse? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval. Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Ross.
Well, I'm one of those people that have been very public about my position on this issue, both on Facebook and in person. And I did vote for the referendum back in August to have it in November, and I've favored a district system for a long, long time. So I appreciate the people that know how long it took us to get there. But at the same time, a judge is a judge. And there are circuit court and appeals in Supreme Court, because why? The last time I checked, you know, no judge was a second coming, so they're not perfect either, and that's why we have an appeal process. But someone says, but why are you appealing? I think, you know, all this teach our kids that principle is important. And I said, there is a Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965, and I hope many of you have read that legislation as amended. And it talks about, in the singular, it says minority. It doesn't say minorities, it's never said coalition of minorities, it's never said conditional coalitions of minorities, and it's never defined cohesive of minorities. Now, since that law has been in place in a number of litigations, there has been a split between circuit courts. Some have adopted the coalition of minority principle, which has never been applied by the Supreme Court. And other circuits have said, no, that a coalition of minorities can't constitute a coalition for the purpose of the Voting Rights Act, Section 2 violation. So that is a factual difference of opinion among judges and among circuit court judges, which are superior to the federal district court. Now, the Fourth Circuit has never ruled on that issue, it's been silent. The Supreme Court has never ruled on that issue, it's been silent. So the question of whether or not a coalition of minorities constitutes a minority for the purposes of a civil rights violation, which would give a federal circuit court the jurisdiction to issue an opinion, has not been resolved. I would encourage anyone, and I would like to enter it into the record as the minutes, this is our appeal. And it explicitly explains why we are appealing. Not because we're wanting to go back to the past, but whether or not we're subject, because it doesn't say, in fact, it says we are not going back to the past, if you read this, but it does say.
Folks, we respect the speaker, please.
We do not want to subject our citizens and their sovereignty to oversight and what I see as judicial overreach to put an interpretation on a Section 2 violation that the Supreme Court nor the Fourth Circuit has ever concurred with. So this is about not whether we're having districts or not. This is about who draws the districts and under what legislation. Because we already have the Fowler Law, which makes us go to districts, at least seven. And we have the State Voting Rights Act, which requires us to what? And we have the State Voting Rights Act, which requires us to what? To put in place influence districts. But it retains the autonomy of the citizens to draw the districts. So this is about whether or not Virginia Beach citizens, not just this council, Virginia Beach citizens are going to have their reg, their regu, their districts and how they elect people supervised by a federal judge on an interpretation of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, that there is a significant difference of opinion on whether or not the basis of his ruling is allowed under the Voting Rights Act. And that's what this 61 pages is roughly about. So I would, when someone asked, "Mr. Moss, why are you voting for appeal?" It's the reasoning in this document. And I'd ask that it be entered into the record and posted somewhere so people could read it. It's very educational. And it really explains my position. I can't speak for the others. But I have always spoken out in favor of district systems. We have the second highest integrated neighborhoods of major urban cities in the United States. Which is why the special master had a very difficult time and acknowledged that he couldn't even find the statistical significance of Hispanics and the Asian Pacific Islander voting to know how they voted because they're so dispersed. So I think if you wanna, so when you ask me, "What am I gonna say out when I talk to voters?" I'm gonna talk to this. Because I think in the end, our job is to protect our citizens and also to protect us against what we've judged to be judicial overreach in applying a legislation in a way in which the Congress and the, never intended in my judgment. And certainly, there's a difference of opinion among the courts, how it should be interpreted. And I think we are doing a great service, not only to our citizens, but to the nation, to resolve what does that Section 2 really mean? And that's why I'm supporting the appeal. And I think, we haven't spent millions and millions, we spent 1.43 million to date. Uh, I think that was the number I heard. It was public, but it is significant. But what have people sacrificed to preserve the people's sovereignty? They've given a lot of lives, another just another million people have died for self-governance in wars to defend our liberties. And this is, who wants to be subject to judicial overreach? Don't we owe it to ourselves to preserve the autonomy of our citizens to draw their districts? And I think this opinion makes a solid case. And someone who says, "If you win, you still lose." I think you never lose making the decision on principle. And in the end, I'm not returned to office if I choose, that, then it's a price worth paying. Because it's doing the right thing. And I don't do things because of the political consequences on election day. What's right is right, independent of the electoral consequences. And I would make a substitution to continue with our lawsuit.
We have a motion for substitute to, uh, to continue with the lawsuit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, we have this. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I will leave the floor.
Okay, Mr. Tower?
Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have also read and been impressed by the brief that's been filed on behalf of the city's position in this case. It is well-written, it is well-thought-out. And the folks that did the job, as they were paid to do to represent the city, did a good job. The issue in my mind at this point is not simply who's got the strongest legal position. It is, obviously, it is a position on which there are different judicial decisions. No one is going to be embarrassed in terms of the legal positions taken in this case for pursuing this case. They are rational bases for appeal. But there are rational bases for settling this case. And I wanna put this in the context of settling this case. I am a mediator and perhaps I have a bias for settling affairs and moving on. I've seen, I've seen many cases in private practice where parties get deeply involved in litigation, both feeling that they're right, both having good arguments, legal arguments and factual arguments that they're right. But sometimes, I think there are opportunities to settle a case where the parties decide further litigation will not necessarily achieve all of our goals, almost probably will not achieve all of our goals. And the goals that it won't achieve are offset by putting the dispute aside and moving on to not necessarily more important things, but other things that require attention of whether it's a business, whether it's an individual, or whether it's a city. And I believe, after struggling with this, and I have struggled with it, I will tell you, that I think the time has come, there's an offer to settle this case to, that would involve a significant reduction in our exposure to paying other people's legal fees. It would obviously permit us to not have to incur any further exposure or legal fees. And we know very well what the outlines of the district system that has been imposed upon us, yes, not one we chose. But I don't hear people telling me they think the system that has been imposed is materially unfair. I've heard people say that they don't like this about it or that about it. But in general, I think people, having seen the districts, are adjusting to them. As I've said a couple of weeks ago, I have no interest in this from an electoral standpoint. I don't plan to run for, again, I don't know whether that's made a difference, but I, I believe anyone could vote to appeal this or to, and continue this, or to settle this case and be entirely justified morally, legally, and any other way. It's a close call. This is not an easy issue. It's a difficult issue. I've, after struggling with it, I've come down on the case on the side of, I think that I will support Mr. Ross's motion because I think this city is better off to put this matter behind us and move on to other things. I hope others will join me in it, but I would understand indeed. I think, I have the highest respect for Mr. Moss's analysis of the position and for his on it, and anyone who joins him in this motion, I, I understand where they're coming from. I will oppose Mr. Moss's substitute motion for the reasons I said, but I respect, highly respect anyone who chooses to pursue this appeal. Because I think, without repeating Mr. Moss's comments, this is a, an issue where certainly there are good reasons to want to appeal, to vindicate the position that the city has taken. But I believe the reasons for seizing the opportunity to settle this case with the plaintiffs and move on outweighs them. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Ross?
Ms. Ulan, did you wanna?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
I'd just like to say, I certainly support Councilmember Ross, Ross's resolution here. You know, since the very beginning of the court's resolution, decision for the system that was deemed discriminatory and illegal, that resonated with me. And since that time, I knew then I wouldn't support an appeal. Nothing's changed since that time. I don't see any evidence, in my opinion, that would warrant moving forward with an appeal. Um, I've, I've heard the, the discussions, I've heard the probability of winning here, and that hasn't moved me. What I heard in the very beginning, though, from the judge, and knowing the history that I know, I just can't support an appeal, knowing what I, I know. And like some people, you just can't unlearn what you know. I can't unlearn what I already know. So I have to stick to what I, I believe and what I know and what I understand from the decision that came down. And I think this is a real pivotal moment for us as a city in moving forward. And I've also looked at the financial implications, you know, continuing to spend money on this particular trial or decision or to fight against it. I, I don't think that's in the best interest of the taxpayers. I don't. Some disagree, they think that it is. I don't see it that way. I, I don't see the need to continue to fight against something and push against something. I think the money, the finance, the obligation should be more so in addressing, moving forward, educating the public, and really coming to terms with what we have. Move forward, set the goal, educate the public. That's what I think we need to do at this point. I certainly do support Councilmember Ross's resolutions to end the appeal.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, it says something, when the only two minorities on this body, the only fourth and fifth elected African Americans to this city council in its history speak out against and up against a lawsuit, a federal lawsuit that was deemed discriminatory because it dilutes African Americans and marginalized communities' voice throughout our city. I think that should not be overlooked. I think the financial piece of this case speaks for itself. The taxpayers have to decide if spending and upwards in excess of over $6 million, $5 million plus all the, the numbers, if, if that's a good use of their taxpayer of dollars. When there's a, a settlement proposed by the plaintiff to settle those fees right now, that sits at $4 million and counting, to settle those fees of 1.6, I think the math speaks for itself. But I wanna speak to the moral implications of this decision. Let us be dissatisfied until integration is not seen as a problem, but as an opportunity to participate in the beauty of diversity. Martin Luther King Jr. said that, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Yesterday, the nation celebrated the legacy of Dr. King's legacy. And included in that legacy and fighting for equality for all men, women, and children of all colors and creeds and background was the hard-fought battle for the right to vote. That led to the Voting Rights Act of 1965. How disappointing and sad that today, in the year of 2022, the city of Virginia Beach is fighting to appeal a federal lawsuit that states the city election system violates that Voting Rights Act of 1965 because it dilutes African Americans and minorities' votes throughout the city. Oh, how it must be nice to have a certain level of privilege to excuse that and talk about the legalities of a case. The Drea Scott decision, that can be considered an overreach. But you know, speaking here at home in the city that I grew up in, it's an eerie feeling to sit amongst one's peers, one of only two racial minorities, and discuss a case such as this about discriminat, um, about discrimination against minorities. And that points get lost in legal maneuvering. I imagine this is how Sojourner Truth felt when she gave her historic "Ain't Our Women" speech. I can imagine just how Frederick Douglass felt speaking as a man, not as a slave who escaped slavery, but as a man who escaped slavery, to speak about the horrors of slavery to northern abolitionists. I imagine how city workers, how the city workers and our public works feel hearing that we could find money to appeal the case and spend taxpayer dollars that can reach up to $10 million instead of figuring out how to provide them an income to take care of their families, take care of themselves, and continue to support our great city. I understand this body will do what it, what it pleases. But I have to make it known, and I thought this, as Councilwoman stated, this is a pivotal point in our history. Either we're gonna go backwards, or we're gonna go forwards. And ultimately, the people will decide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I would. I certainly acknowledge my peer and, and for his view of, of the morality of this issue, but I, I take exception that, that he has a monopoly on what the moral value judgment on this issue is. I would just like, I know facts are dangerous because we're all entitled to our opinions, but not our own facts. But it is important to note, not a single Hispanic or a single Asian Pacific Islander was a party to this suit. Now, though they are considered to be part of this cohesive minority, but their names are nowhere, and it was mentioned in the documents. But I think more importantly, it was mentioned, I'm getting back to the issue of what's discriminatory, now there's a legal, and then there's a moral view of that. But I think it's important to note that the special master appointed by the federal judge concluded, and I quote, "It is mathematically impossible to estimate the voting behavior of each individual group." And what I wanna say there is, because our, our neighborhoods are so integrated across the city, the second highest in the country, that we see results. And therefore, it's very difficult, no one minority here could meet the 50% requirement of the Federal Voting Rights Act. Couldn't be, wasn't mathematically possible. So the case had to be refiled, and it was, bringing another, two other groups into the lawsuit, but they never joined the lawsuit. So I just want people to understand, this isn't about just being, trying to suppress minorities or just, or to elevate minorities. This is about making sure that we really are treating everyone the same. And that our, and if you look at the voting thing, it kinda shows. But the bad system, I didn't like it before. But the fact that the system was bad doesn't warrant a federal judge doing something that the law doesn't give them jurisdiction to do. And that's why reading the case is important, because he based it on no math. He made an assertion, an extrapolation, which even the special master he appointed commented on. So this really is, and you're right, I agree with Mr. Tower, this, you could vote either way and make a strong case. But I would say, no, neither side has a superior moral high ground on this issue. Honorable people can disagree for honorable reasons. And I think we are disagreeing for honorable reasons, and I don't question anyone's motivations, nor my own. I am acting on what I think is the right course of action. And I just, I'm not yielding a moral high ground to, to another, but I respect the moral high ground that they hold and the moral opinion they express. I just come to a different conclusion on the same thought process.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And listen, Councilmember Moss knows, I, I have the utmost and highest respect for him. And we, we differ on a lot of issues, but one thing I do value about Mr. Moss is he's principled, he's valued, and he tells you, he tells you what he thinks straight up. But I'm not, I, I don't, I hope it doesn't come across as though I'm sitting upon a moral high ground, because I, I tell you, I, I am not. What I'm speaking as is an African-American man who grew up in this city, who've never seen representation of anyone that looked like him on this board, who hasn't seen council members from this body in his neighborhood speaking to residents. This past year was the first time in a community where I grew up in, Friendship Village and Historic City Tech Community, the first time ever that we got a basketball court there because they had true representation who took the time to go there and meet with the families, meet with the youth, meet with the community, and talk about the needs and concerns and ideas that they have. So I don't, I don't want, I'm not sitting up here on a, on a moral panel judge or, or top. What I'm talking to you about is, what I'm speaking to you is from experience. Wasn't that long ago, African Americans throughout this city has had to fight- Wasn't that long ago, African-Americans throughout this city has had to fight for disparity study, for economic equality. Wasn't that long ago, African-Americans throughout this city had to come together and fight for a citizen review board. And still, it wasn't that long ago that Holloway in herself, African-American woman, who led the charge and said enough was enough, we have to have representation throughout our city because of this system dilutes our vote. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a judge, there are certain legal merits to everyone's position up here. But what I'm speaking to you from is in a position of experience as a minority and what it feels like to be unheard and overlooked within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, anybody else? The vote is open. We will vote on the substitute motion to continue the appeal.
By a vote of six to four, the substitute motion has passed.
No, the substitute motion is now the main motion.
Okay, now the substitute motion we vote on the thing to vote to end the appeal.
No, no, you just made the substitute motion the main motion, so now you are voting on whether or not to approve the substitute motion, which is to continue the appeal.
Okay, then we're voting on that. My apologies. We're voting again to, you know, to keep going with the appeal.
We're still, we're voting to appeal.
We're voting to appeal.
By a vote of, six to four, you have passed the motion to continue with the appeal.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rouse, moving on to item four.
We have speakers. The first speaker is Barbara Messner. Then after Ms. Messner is Melissa Lukasen.
That, when you're spending money, that's a supermajority, seven. Ms. Wilson's not here, that was not seven. Six is not a supermajority, and I can, I've mailed it to you before. When John Yearne was on, and he talked about the supermajority, when it's that much money, it's a supermajority. Okay, which, which item, sorry?
Item number four.
Number four, on which one?
We're under ordinance and resolution.
Ordinance and resolution?
A four.
Transfer $60,000 from the general fund, city council emergent, emergent needs reserve to the 2021-2022 communications office operating budget. And Julie Hill just retired, and you have Tiffany Russell now, who's spending all this money for public outreach, the city's election system and new districts. Requested by Mr. Rouse. And I think it's important, when we're talking about districts and who represents who, you're at large. You know, Red Wing doesn't have an upgraded basketball court. It's not mostly blacks there. It's, it's a lot of middle and low-income people, and none of you have done anything. Ms. Henley's come out there, Ms. Wooton's come out there, seen all the crashes, all the things. So y'all pick and choose where the money goes and how you vote, and this is on the new districts. You want to spend money, you've already started spending money. $200,000 that you've allocated, and it's up to the voter registrar to notify us. It's not up to y'all to have your slant. Okay, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Melissa Lukasen, you're next.
Gosh, Mr. Moss, must have had a nerve with you tonight. Sorry about that. I just want, as, I'm coming to as a business owner, so I understand budgets. I've done, built five businesses in the city. And I thank you, Councilman Ross, for having the forethought to know that, you know, when we want to start a marketing campaign, we budget a certain amount, but, you know, we never ask for enough, do we? Right? What's the worst that can happen? You give the extra 60 grand to tell your taxpayers about the voting so that we understand it, and if we don't spend it all, you don't need it, what happens? It goes back in the emergency funds, right? Is that where it would go?
I believe general funds.
General funds, okay. So it would go back to the taxpayers. So I just would really encourage you to just hit that yes button for that extra 60,000. And if you don't, then I guess I'll have to go to the community, and we'll have to raise the extra 60,000, right, that's going to be needed to make sure that we notify everybody, all the taxpayers, about what's been happening with regard to the lawsuit and with regard to how they should be voting now. My 21-year-old, you know, we just talked about it today. She's been voting since she was 18 years old. She was asking me why I was speaking tonight, and I explained to her about the lawsuit and how I did find it really weird that, you know, forever that I've been in the city of Virginia Beach, that I live in Great Neck area, right? So my kids go to Cox, well, they went to Cox, they're all out of school now, but... So we all know the economic, I guess, economic picture of the area of Great Neck. Well, why was I able to vote for people in other districts, right? Like, I, over the time I've lived in Virginia Beach, all I want to have is fairness and equity in the city, and I just really would like you guys to consider what you're doing, the morality of what you're doing with regard to the lawsuit. I know we're not talking about the lawsuit anymore, we're on to this money, but now we have to educate the taxpayers because now we have the decisions been made, correct? So let's just, just hit the button yes, so we can make sure that we have enough so that we can educate the taxpayers on what they need to do come election time, which coincidentally, I believe, you know, we'll be voting for, what, seven, seven people on this board? So, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The thought behind this ordinance is that we have spent more than $250,000 communicating about the bond referendum that went out to our entire city. Here we have a budget from the communications office, by the way, who has a very robust plan, but obviously, from the briefing that we received last week, we'll need more resources in order to adequately inform, engage, and educate the public about the new voting system. And so this $60,000 is comparable and is in line with what we have spent already compared to the bond referendum. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
I want to second it. This is a case where, you know, often we do agree, is that you can't over-educate and you can hardly ever over-communicate, and despite all that we spent on the bond referendum and all the good work that all of us did out there, there were still people that said, "Oh, I didn't know about this," or "I didn't know about this." So I think it's an excellent choice, as I mentioned earlier. I think we can do it in a non-incumbent advocating way, so it's to the facts. And even when we do this, there will still be people that will say, "Oh, I didn't know." And so I think it's a good effort, and I highly support it.
Anybody else? You know, I think it is going to be mission essential going forward that we start an early intervention program with the education going forward. It's a complex system, and it's a good first start, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have, we have motion to approve? Do we have a second? Okay, vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to zero, you approve the ordinance.
Okay, great. We open a public hearing, I'm planning right now, and I believe it's item two we're going to be hearing?
Two and three.
Okay. First one, Princess Anne Village LLC, Susan Kellum, David and B.E. Kellum, and revocable trust Kellum and Eaton Incorporated Sisters II LLC, Charles Burrows III at the city of Virginia Beach, for a conditional change of zoning from B2 community business, AG1 and AG2 agricultural districts, to conditional PD H2 planned unit development, R10 residential district, and conditional B2 business districts, development of 73 residential lots with up to 89 dwellings and one commercial partner parcel at 2369, 2373, 2375, 2381, 2385 Princess Anne Road, 2393, 2401, and 2413 North Landing Roads, and parcel between 2393 North Landing Road, 2385 Princess Anne Road in District 2, formerly Princess Anne. That took a while to read.
Yes, it did. Thank you. It took about as long as for you to read it as it did for my clients to get through this application. Thank you very much. My name's RJ Nutter. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. My clients actually filed this application in 2018, and they have diligently pursued every single ordinance that you've adopted on stormwater, John, to your comprehensive plans, to the different overlay planning districts that overlay this property. It's never easy to develop property. This was especially trying only because they wanted to do the right thing. They knew this property would be an anchor to the courthouse. They knew it would be important to set a new tone for development here. And they reached out to one of the region's most highly-regarded developers, Fry Properties with Bart Fry, to come in and oversee the plan, oversee the design of the homes, and that's what we've brought to you tonight. I'd like to tell you about four components of this application that you can be particularly proud about. The first is compliance with a large number of planning programs that apply to this property. The second, and I'll come back to that, is the preservation of critical urban forest and compliance with plans adopted as long as 1990 for the West Net Creek study that was done by this council and adopted by this council in 1990. In addition to that, we comply with your stormwater requirements, which took an enormous amount of different work and effort by the applicant in this case. And finally, we bring in you a high-quality development that complies with your historic preservation requirements. In fact, we've been to the historic district commission on two separate occasions so that every home in this development has been approved, the lighting has been approved, every single component of that feature that they look at typically has been approved in this process. So a lot of work has been done before we get to this council chamber. And so, like, just not many clients hang on for four years, quite frankly, I must tell you. Not to mention legal fees. It's probably as long as the Supreme Court case is going to take that you're going to have to deal with. So commend them, if you will. So first of all, compliance with the programs and the plans that you've adopted. Your staff has done a terrific job of evaluating the different plans that apply to this property. And I'm happy to tell you that we have met with the ITA committee, the Navy, in terms of the density. We've talked to the inter-facility zone requirements. We have met with the, I'm sorry, the coastal, this is part of the coastal historic district as well. It's part of the inter-facility zone, the transition zone, the municipal center district, all of which apply to this property. Some with different conceptions of what should be here, what should not be here, and staff has done a terrific job of evaluating them, making them mesh together. So that comes to a really big decision we had to make when we first met with the ITA Navy committee. And this property is in the 65 to 70 noise zone, so the requirement with the Navy is that it be at or below the densities around it. We, the staff submitted a variety of applications that have been approved by this council previously. Most of the time, the densities were at 3.0 and up. This is well below that, and that's even counting the garage units that we've added here. In fact, to make it a little bit more affordable and to introduce the ability of people who work here at the municipal center to be able to rent a garage apartment and live and walk directly to the courthouse. That program has been successful in East Beach. It's been successful with Cavalier, and we wanted to introduce it here as well. The other important part of this is the preservation of the critical urban forest. This has become a central issue throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. The General Assembly adopted legislation last year to allow councils to, in fact, specifically look at tree preservation and so forth. In this case, I'm happy to tell you that the whole property is 55 acres. We're developing 21.5 acres of that 55. We're also putting into conservation easements 71.4 acres. So this actually achieves the goals of the 1990 study, the cause of the preservation of the West Net Creek estuary area. We don't do it all, but we fill a big portion of that program. We should be very proud of that, and I want to thank Ms. Henley for making sure those things got created as part of this plan. She also was kind enough to send me the Virginia Tech study on evaporate transpiration. And this study shows the important role that trees play in helping address the stormwater issue. And there's actual scientific evidence of the ability of trees, and certain types of trees, in certain settings, to actually be a part of the stormwater system. So it's backed by Virginia Tech and the Nature Conservancy.
I stand by that, by the way.
Thank you very much.
What's food worth that, Amber?
I haven't said Virginia Tech. Just a terrific study, and it's remarkable to read, and I'm sure Ms. Henley would provide it to you if you were interested. The third component of this is stormwater, and this took us over two years. And I'm happy to tell you that two things are important here. First is that the plan that my clients have developed will address all the stormwater they have and a good portion of the water on Holland Road that's been plaguing the city for some time. We're bringing that into our system for treatment, and we still comply with your city's program. The part that we had trouble with was a large amount of water, this would have fasted you, Mr. Moss, about 162 acres, just on the other side of Prince Anne, on this side of Prince Anne Road, as a matter of fact, that was running through this property, and the model showed that it would overflow this property. So we had to direct, devise a plan to address that and still comply with your modeling requirements. And I'm happy to tell you that's been done. I'm happy to tell you we don't have one drop of water in that system by ourselves. It'll be all public water, and the best part about it is we've allowed you to treat it on this property without having to go on the property on this side of the road and build another stormwater park. We can all take care of it through this property. We're very happy about that, and we're happy about the city's participation in that program, and they were very, very helpful. Finally, high-quality development. As I've indicated, Fry Properties has a strong record. This will only be the third project they've attempted in Southampton Roads. East Beach and the Cavalier were the first two. This will be the third. Every home here faces on the, in open space or park area. There's no vehicles in front. There's no driveways in front. There are access garages and alleyways in the rear of these properties. That took a lot of maneuvering. We had to work with the fire department. We had to work with, frankly, every other department in the city, quite frankly. But all of that's been done for you, and that's what makes this property so unique. So we're happy it's here. We have had outreach. I'm happy there's no opposition, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. But that's an overview of a very complex, long, and very worthwhile project that you'll all be proud of, I have no doubt, particularly with the Virginia Tech stamp of approval over there from Mr. Rouse. So, Mr. Mayor?
If questions are concerned, Ms. Henley?
Could you address the land swap that we?
Thank you, Ms. Henley. Yes. Sometime, several years ago, when we started this, the city, a portion of the property that we're rezoning or to be brought into this property is owned by the city of Virginia Beach. That's why we had to name the city as a party to the application. At the same time, several years ago, we entered into an agreement that we would swap the city. We would give the city an equal amount of property on our side, and we would pay the city $20,000 in addition to that swap, even though the piece of property we're getting will have a complete easement over top of it for public use, public utilities. They'll be underground, and we can work with that. So that swap, we had signed and agreed to several years ago, and unfortunately, we had had a sunset date because no one anticipated COVID. So as a result, the time period has elapsed, so we have signed a new agreement with the city to do the exact same deal we agreed to previously, and that will come to you on February the 1st. We've already signed all the documents. to you on February the 1st. We've already signed all the documents. The exhibits are already in the city attorney's office. But that'll come forward to you on February 1st.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Moss?
I just wanted to comment. I just thank you for your personal testimony that the stormwater regulations didn't preclude you from having development in Virginia Beach, and you were able to do that. Because certainly, it's a testimony. I'll probably record that video you just made.
I'm happy to. It wasn't me. It was my client.
Well, I know. But my point, it just shows that it really is possible, and it wasn't the impediment to your ability to develop the property. And that's the message I want to get out. Our standards are designed to protect the larger community and the neighborhood, and you proved that it's possible. And thank you.
It's my pleasure. Smart engineers, I'm afraid, not lawyers.
Anyone else?
Any other questions or comments? I did ask that this be heard because it is so complicated, and it's got so many different parts. And I really wanted it to be publicly known so that, because I know this is going to be a very big focal point when the work starts happening over there. And I think it's important that everybody know all that went into all of this. And I know that these folks who are the applicants and the developers thought we would never get to this night. And I really appreciate the willingness to continue to work through all of these things because this property just comes in a, there are a lot of components to it, and it affects a lot of different things. And it just turned out to be one thing after the other as we went through. But I do remember, after the first little glitch, when the developers brought in what they thought was the premier consultant on neo-traditional development, and it turned out to be not the thing to do, that they agreed that, well, they would continue. I remember Mr. Burrows saying, "And we're going to do all the stormwater we need to do." And he probably, both of them probably wish they'd never heard of that statement. But I really appreciate sticking through all of this. And I appreciate their homegrown consultant, Mr. Fry, inviting the stakeholders over to East Beach to look at the type of development over there. And the thing that impressed me the most, next to the quality of the land, was the extent that they would go through to save a particular tree that had a particular personality. And I know that there are going to be trees that are going to come down over here. They'll have to. But I think if there's anybody who's going to make sure that we take care of all of the trees that we can and appreciate all of the work that has gone into the tree study that we've done, I think that we've got the developers. And I just have to say to Susan Kellum, I know you thought you would never get here, and I'm glad you're finally here. But we do have to, still after this, because it has to have a public hearing, have another action on February 1st that will agree to that swap, which is the old railroad right-of-way that is in there. And also, I think there is some realization that because so much of the city water is going through this property, that we're going to be utilizing a CIP that we do have. We kind of learned from the one we have down at the oceanfront regarding parking, that if a developer is going to have some extra parking, we can do some work, extra work, and get some. The same thing, I think, is going to happen over and over again with the stormwater, not only here, but around the city, because these redevelopments are going to find that they're going to be treating city water, and we'll be able to get a much better deal if we can work with the developers to upgrade our own. And that's what's happening here.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we will need to tap into that money source because we are going to be improving the city's water project through this property that particularly conveys Princess Anne Road. I think you all worked out the Holland Road okay.
We did.
But the Princess Anne Road, we are going to be looking to that CIP project to make that happen. So, there's so much to be told about this, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it a long time. But I think when this is developed, it's going to be, we look at what we're doing and what we have here with our municipal center. This is going to be a very high-quality neighborhood that is going to complement it. And I had to get used to the garage apartment idea.
I understand.
But I can see the value of that, not only in allowing family members, maybe an older person, we've got the granny flats, but maybe the kid who hasn't gotten quite on his own yet, or maybe a city employee, a teacher at Kellum or so forth, that would be able to have a place to live. And of course, the way these are restricted, they cannot be more than 800 feet, 800 square feet. They cannot have their own electrical source and so forth. It has to be just the garage apartment. So, I think that's going to work. It's going to provide some capability for people who need a good place to live in an affordable fashion. So, I've come to terms with that. And I think it's going to work out all right.
Thank you.
Given all these things. But I'm going to make the motion to approve, contingent on our revisiting and approving the land swap that needs to be dealt with, because we do have to have a public hearing with that.
Ms. Henley, we have a speaker.
We have one additional speaker, yes. Sorry.
Wasn't aware, sorry.
Save my motion.
That's all right.
How interesting that Bart Fry is one of the partners with Thompson and Ruffin on the Cavalier deal that you all subsidize, is your consultant. Isn't that sweet? And as far as, you know, garage apartments, give me a break. Give me a break. Okay. And you're talking about taking care of, oh, well, it's going to be a few trees. You don't care about trees. Look at Asheville Park. You spent 12 million, 11 million, sorry. Millions, nothing to you guys, because it's not your money. It's ours. Thompson pumps to keep pumping the water for Asheville Park, all the flooding. But all you're doing is moving it. It has nowhere to go. And speaking of the Cavalier, you know, all the flood problems, you know, you have that hideous thing next to the breakers and 62nd Street. None of this stuff works. There's no place. It's called tidewater for a reason. And when you have uncontrolled growth, you have flooding. So, the north end goes to Owl's Creek, to Rudy Inlet, to Red Wing. And if you look at all the little silver things, the drains that aren't totally clogged, it all goes to Punggol. Ocean View, East Beach, Bart Fry. Sure, it's nice when the city lets you do whatever you want, and they subsidize half these people. Subsidize the Cavalier, subsidize 31st Street. It's pretty easy to build something fancy for who you want, where you want. And planning, you appoint planning. Mr. Tahan, Taylor Adams, you know, is one of the deputy city attorneys, and he's economic development authority. You delegate everybody. You pay their salaries. Fancy digs at Town Center. We built five parking garages. I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers, sir.
Mrs. Henley, do we have a motion?
Yes, I do have one more question for Mr. Nutter, because I do want to make sure we are clear. You will have the conservation area in the developed area, but then there's another 48 acres that's on the other part.
Yes, ma'am.
And that, which is over by the city garage.
City garage.
The helicopter.
Yes, ma'am. That's part of it.
So, we have two major conservation areas, and you will be?
We will granting conservation easements to the city.
Conservation easements in perpetuity?
Yes, ma'am, completely.
On those areas. So, it amounts to about a little over 70 acres.
71.4.
Okay. And, okay, just wanted to make sure, because of that other part, the other 48 acres, that's not a part of this immediate developed area. It's actually separate, isn't it?
It is separate. It's a separate parcel. It's owned by the developers.
Okay.
And it was their intent to make that.
Included in this as a part of what will be conservation area. Okay, so, I move approval of the application contingent on the action February 1st to publicly hear the land swap proposal and to make that action approved.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one item. This is what made the city attorney or planning. And there's nothing prejudicial to the application. It's, when someone has a conservation easement, like there's one on the golf course off of First Court Road, that's a federal conservation easement. I assume that we're, there's no property tax liability on a conservation easement if it precludes all development and that belongs to the public. Doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I would just like to have an answer on that, just to confirm. I think that might be true, but I'm not certain.
I'm not either, so I'll get you the answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this point, vote open?
By a vote of 10 to 0, we approve the application.
Okay, final item for the evening. Number three, James D. White, revocable living trust for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental, unit 407 18th Street, unit A, District Six.
Mr. White?
I don't see him. I think he did.
He may have left. Jim White?
Should we have a motion for a deferral at this point?
Yeah, I don't.
Motion's for the fur.
I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry. So, Ms. Massner did sign up for this item, so.
Okay.
Ms. Massner?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. White was here earlier, and I sought him out before the council meeting and asked him about the deferral. And he told me that he no longer wanted the deferral and that he had resolved his issue and that he would just prefer that we go ahead and approve.
Well, I'll wait till she speaks in the upcoming discussion.
Ms. Massner, go ahead.
There's no rules. Okay. Conditional use permit. Oh, Mr. Branch is taking his little potty break. Short-term rental, 407 18th Street. Mr. Jones, you're not supposed to be the representative for the people. You know, if they don't show up, you're not supposed to be speaking for them. But then, there are no rules around here.
With due respect.
With due respect?
Yes.
Okay, I waited.
Make your point.
Okay.
Please.
All right. And what on earth is with this formerly District Six beach? You know, you're appealing this. I mean, who's representing who? Not that it matters to y'all, but Mr. Moss, Ms. Henley, Mr. Jones, all promised no more short-term rentals. You don't have enough people. You don't have health department. You don't have workers. You keep giving more money to planning, and you outsource a lot of the work. We don't need any more short-term Thank you.
I could just make a comment.
Okay, make a comment.
My concern in the past was that we were continuing to approve short-term rentals before we adopted a policy. And now, I think we have done that. And so, as long as they're conforming to the policies, I am, most of the time, reluctantly approving.
Okay. So, yes, Mr. Moss?
Well, get back to the question. My concern is the business rule of the protocol. We advertised this, and it had deferral on it. That's what the public sees. So, now, based on a one-on-one conversation, we are supposed to act. And my view is that that is not a precedent that I want to set. Now, if he came up here and went through all this, and maybe we, Tahan, but it's like, well, someone's going to be my advocate. I understand about expedition. But we did advertise it as a deferral item. And now, we're saying, well, you can leave a message with any one of us up here, and they can be your proxy. I think that's a precedent we don't want to set. But if we set it, I'm sure it will be repeatedly exercised. So, my advice is, be careful what you vote for, because unintended consequences may not be what you desire. That's just my view.
Mr. Moss, with due respect, a lot of times, even with the consent agenda, we may add that it's going to be deferred or subtracted adored to consent. So, the thing is, we were talking about putting it on consent.
Yes, but he is not here, and we didn't complete that, and we didn't put it on consent. I'm just saying, we are setting a new precedent, and I'm just making sure that everyone knows that's what we're doing, so that everyone can take. I think it's not a precedent we want to set. I'm not prejudicial. If he had been here, I would have voted for it. But he's not here, and we're setting a bad precedent. That's my view.
Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Votes open.
One second. It's open now. By a vote of 7 to 3, you approve the application.
Okay, at this point, we have one item for appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate the community policy and management team. Suzanne Baldwin, representing the private child family provider. Deidra Bolden, representing the human services designated. Amanda Caton, representing the health department. Angela Hicks, representing the community services board. Ronnie Myers-Dobb, representing the Virginia Beach public schools in Olympia. Perkins, representing the juvenile court service.
Okay. That's the only thing. Vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Councilmember Jen.
Okay, under unfinished business, Vice Mayor Wilson asked me to indicate that her absence was due to a medical situation, and she'll be here next week. Okay? Any other new business?
Just one unfinished item. I think a lot of people left here today thinking that when something was on a public hearing, that in fact, the public hearing meant that there would be a following public decision process. So, just, and I just think they walked away thinking we were going to be voting tonight. So, probably in the future, maybe we have to just let people know that the public hearing is just that. It's not a voting item. I think they left thinking about, why weren't we voting on it? That's just an observation.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Bulutti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this comment very brief. I should have mentioned this earlier during our workshop, but I don't want to miss the opportunity while we're celebrating our 60th anniversary to note that I recently celebrated the 60th anniversary of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad just last Saturday. This council recognized 60 years of service and volunteerism on the part of the folks from Plaza Rescue Squad. And I want to thank you for supporting and recognizing their efforts. And mostly, I want to thank the men and women who volunteer their time to serve our neighbors as part of the Plaza Volunteer Rescue Squad, and congratulate them on 60th anniversary.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.